Welcome and grateful that you're joining our virtual town hall meeting tonight for West Pasadena. Of course, all are welcome. I would expect most of you are from District 6 from West Pasadena. And we entitled this virtual town hall two projects in the Lower Arroyo, but I think we're actually going to be talking about at least three or more tonight. Obviously, the Lower Arroyo is a sacred space for us in Pasadena and especially for those of us in West Pasadena. So we're excited about this opportunity to talk. I will just take, as I always do, a moment or two at the top to just address generally what we've been working on in City Hall. And not many surprises here for all of you, I'm sure. We just went through an election cycle, which, please, for Oregon, Pasadena seemed to go pretty smoothly. Now, there may be complaints out there that I have not been put me to or heard about yet, but we were a bit nervous because under this new program, you know, we are required to have the county run our municipal elections. And that was the case back in March in the primary and then again now in November. So this was the first municipal election cycle that was handled entirely by the county and contemporaneous and at the same time with the same ballots for the federal, state, and other local, regional races. So you had everything from a presidential race to statewide ballot initiatives and county proposals as well as the city and then the school district. And so a couple of races, one of which we all participated in and then one of which was just a district. There actually, I think, two or three district seats were up there. So we're pleased there. As I'm sure you know, there are some important changes coming in December with my friend and colleague Victor Porto unseating Terry Torneke for mayor. So Victor will be sworn in in the first week of December and Kerry will be moving on whatever's next for him. We had a council meeting last evening and Kerry was very gracious and congratulated Victor on a well-run campaign. And obviously Kerry, after a long, long career both in city staff, as planning director at one point, and then a council member and then a mayor, has contributed a lot to Pasadena and I'm sure they'll find a way to continue to be involved. But for the council, I'm super excited about sort of a new day, a new direction. And we'll have an opportunity right away to appoint the interim council member for District 5, which is Victor's district. And then looking forward to an election cycle, the next opportunity for a new elected city council member. And I think, you know, obviously we need to find the best people and that's not our district, that's Victor's district residents. But I, for one thing, we could use more female council members. No doubt there are many, many qualified women who are out there who may have an interest. And I also think as the demographics of Pasadena continue to shift, it's a bit surprising that we only have one Latino council member, given that probably 40% or so of our population in this census will turn out to be Latino. So we'll see about all that. As you know, we're moving forward with our police oversight initiative and we'll continue in the next few meetings to talk about the process for appointing a council member and at large appointments to a new public safety oversight commission. That's very exciting. We continue to grapple with COVID and unfortunately we're trending in the wrong direction, certainly nationally and regionally, although in Pasadena we have not had a death in some weeks. So that continues to be a challenge. And last night we extended the Great Plates Program whereby we work with local restaurants to provide meals for those that are in need of that assistance. And it's kind of a win-win in the sense that we're helping support the local restaurants that are trying to hang on through this time and also providing nutrition for, in this case, seniors who are of a particularly, if not poverty level and certainly in need of income in this time. So proud of all that and, you know, no rest for the weary as is usual. But I think as a segue to tonight's discussion, you know, the, all of the things that the city does also have to continue on pace, notwithstanding the crisis of COVID and the distraction of the election cycle. So we are continuing to work on public works projects and other initiatives. So that brings us to tonight's topic, which is the Lower Arroyo. And there are three principal areas that we're going to talk about tonight. The first is the Lower Arroyo Habitat Restoration Project, which Arum Malloy from Public Works is here with some of his team to talk about. Then we'll turn to a wetlands project with South Pasadena that Brett Maui, the city engineer, also with Public Works is here to speak with us about and friends others. And then finally, I asked my good friend and West Pasadena neighbor Doug Van Winkle to be here on behalf of One Arroyo Foundation, which has some exciting projects coming down the pike and looking forward to seeing those. And I think Doug rather has Stan Rothenberg, the president of the foundation, and Rick Cool, the executive director, with him. So it's an interesting and important agenda tonight. And I'll start with Arum Malloy. And as I do that, I want to invite you all to send your questions in using the chat feature if you can and talk in and I will try to curate those as we go. And then after your presentation from each of you, I will ask the questions that we've identified for you. So Ara, I'm welcome. Thank you for being here. Thanks for all you do for West Pasadena. And please do introduce, I see Chris Marquardt, one of your staff, who's going to talk on this issue with the other one. But as you do, please do introduce any staff or consultants that have with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Madison. First and foremost, I want to thank you for allowing us to have this venue to discuss the two projects that my staff is involved with and have this opportunity to inform the public of the steps that we're taking to move these projects forward. I want to thank Taka for organizing this meeting. It was, I asked her to set this up, so I'm really grateful for her and also K-Pass and our Do-It Department. With me today, we have Chris Marquardt, the city engineer. We have Brent Maui, who is the assistant city engineer. And I have Hayden Melbourne, who is a principal civil engineer who will help me with any questions that may come up. But I will be presenting the first one, which is the Lower Arroyo project. And then Brent will represent or present the second project. I'm going to do it quickly because I realize we have three projects today and I want to be conscious of the time and allow for question and answers and also for Mr. Crandall and his team to be able to present their project. So I'm going to share the screen with you momentarily. And I'm going to do this as quickly as possible. There we go. So this is the second time that we're in a town hall setting and discussing this project, Lower Arroyo Seco Habitat Restoration Project. I will not read this, but basically we are following the guidelines of the Arroyo Seco master plan and also design guidelines. We're following the C-CO categorical exemption that, which was also part of the environmental impact report that was approved and adopted by council in 2003. The funding source is residential impact fees, but mostly importantly, we have a grant from Los Angeles County Proposition A Parks Fund, which is expiring on March 31st, 2021. Hence our urgency to get this project done as soon as possible. In July of 2020, we presented this concept to our stakeholders surrounding this project, which was Arroyo Seco Foundation, West Pasadena Neighborhood Association, La Cita Foundation, the Casting Pond Club, and also Pasadena Heritage Foundation. We then had several community meetings. We had actual walks with interested constituents, with our consultants from SOMAS on August 3rd and 20th, on September 15th and 17th, and also on October 16th. On September 1st, we received support for the concept of this project from Recreation and Parks Commission. On September 17th, we presented this project to you in this setting. And we had a lot of good questions and comments that we received. On September 23rd, we went to Urban Forestry Advisory Committee and we received approval for our recommendation to remove invasive trees. And I will discuss that a little bit further in the... So this is the crux of this project. There were issues related to certain trees that some of the constituents were interested in maintaining. UFAK, or the Urban Forest Advisory Committee, approved the project minus all the elm Canary Island palms, pines, that they were supposed to stay. So that was their recommendation. There were about six or seven pine trees that we're going to keep. Then there was a discussion about several eucalyptus trees. We have about seven or eight eucalyptus trees that there were part of this discussion. We have agreed to maintain these eucalyptus trees for them to remain during this process. And after we finish the planting of our trees, we're going to watch and see how the existing trees mature. And as if the maturity of these trees allows shade and so forth, then we will eventually cut those trees. Those trees are, for those who are interested, are number 16, 17, 20, 21, 31, and 33 on our original plan that we submitted. We, in order for us to be able to maintain this project, we have reduced the scope of this project slightly. So there were three eucalyptus trees that were 38, 40, and 103 now have fallen outside of the scope of this project. So we have kind of resized the project to be able to extend the maintenance of this project. Anyway, we'll all continue now with, we're planting close to 2,000 shrubs. We're planting 14 oak trees, three walnut trees, and 17 sycamore trees. We'll be installing an irrigation system and we'll create a natural rest area around the bridge. This is a picture of one of the areas that we're discussing, the pine trees that I'm showing my cursor. These pine trees will stay. There were three or four eucalyptus trees in this area that will stay, but we're going to watch them as our planting of this project is successful and we see these trees mature, then we will selectively decide when to cut them. This is the area of, the northern area of where the planting and the maintenance will occur. This is the Vandy Camp Bridge. And the area of focus will be in this area and also south of the bridge. So what I meant by saying this blue area, the small blue area, is where we have eliminated from the scope of this project in order to be able to have more funding to maintain the rest of this project. So during construction, we'll have a restoration ecologist that will be watching this. We'll have a contractor who will be performing the work. And we'll have a wildlife biologist that will be watching the construction and to make sure that if there are any wildlife or anything else, if there's any habitat that we may be endangering, they'll be watching that this does not occur. What we have added to the scope of this project, and that was one of the major issues that the constituents brought up, was the monitoring and maintenance. So we are proposing that, not proposing, but we will have a five-year monitoring and maintenance program that will be through a separate contract and a consultant to maintain these areas for a minimum of five years. What are the next steps on the timeline? As I mentioned, on September 1st, we received the Wacken Parks Commission support. On September 23rd, we received UFAK's support. We advertised the project on October 15th. Bids were opened on November 5th and we received seven bids. On November 23rd, we will go to city council for award of this contract. And our deadline to finish this project fully is March 21st of 2021. Councilmember Madison, this is, I'll stop sharing. This is my quick recap. I believe we have reached consensus with the constituents. I think it's amicable on both sides to be able to pursue this project. There's half a million dollars that we need to spend on this project and make sure that Arroyo receives this funding and it will benefit Lower Arroyo completely. So we're very excited to go to city council on the 23rd and hopefully we'll receive your support on that day to award the contract. And we will work with the constituents even during the construction. I'm sure there will be some interested parties that want to watch or be part of this. And we'll make sure that they're involved in selection of which trees are being cut. So we want to be transparent that the trees that we mentioned that will be maintained, that will not be cut. So I welcome anybody who wants to participate in this process, initially when we mark the trees for removal. But I think staff and the public had very fruitful conversations. And we have learned, I have learned a lot. And we're really looking forward to moving forward with this project and creating a beautiful habitat in Lower Arroyo. So that ends my discussion. And I don't know if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ara. We are grateful, obviously, for any resources and attention to the Arroyo. And obviously, the fact that we may have questions or disagreements about how those resources should be spent, you know, that's welcome to our world, right? As, you know, council and staff.
Absolutely.
One of these questions is a good one for sure is that, you know, the Arroyo has such a long history. And when we start to talk about, you know, non-native plants versus sort of invasive plants, you know, at what point does something that's been there for many decades stop being non-native or invasive and part of the sort of environment that we should respect and retain?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've addressed that several times. I think there is, you know, it's like, what is historical building, right? If anything is over 50 years, it becomes historical. We're talking about habitat restoration, which is a different geological timeline. So we're not looking at 100 years or 150 years or 300 years. We're looking at habitat that has been there for thousands of years and they have adapted themselves to the environment and they can survive. The species that are being introduced unconsciously through neighborhood plants, through the wind and/or even planting, the existing or the native plants are not equipped to fight or defend themselves in regards to habitat. So we're kind of trying to help the existing habitat to restore itself to its original conditions. And the grant funding that we have received is intended for that purpose, which is habitat restoration. And I understand for some folks, habitat restoration means something different. For hardcore naturalist, habitat restoration is as I defined. For some, they think that habitat restoration is a landscape project. So this is not a landscape project. We're trying to restore the area before mankind was here. I'm talking about new settlement, not the old settlement. The population who existed here thousands of years ago, they were very adopted to live with nature. We haven't. We have not adopted to nature the way they used to. So we need to help nature to restore itself, especially Lower Arroyo, which is designated natural habitat. If this was a park, I would definitely have a different discussion. This is a natural habitat as defined by the master plan.
And then another question, which may be more appropriate to raise when this comes back to council, but is a good one that we should emphasize now too well. And that is, what about maintenance? You know, I think there's a big fear in the, in West Pasadena that we'll kind of do this project, leave, and then there won't be maintenance and follow-through to ensure that everything from the saplings that are planted will thrive to non-natives won't reinvest or even other species will then take over at a more rapid pace or whatnot. So what about, and I understand this is not a maintenance project per se.
Right. I wholeheartedly agree with that comment that we have failed in the past to maintain some of our projects that were natural habitat restoration. So with that said, we're proposing to bring for sure a five-year maintenance program with this project. It will be funded separately. It will not be staff-driven. It will be driven by natural, you know, biologists and also a contractor that understands natural habitat and the difference between local species and non-local species. So the agreement was for this project to be brought forward to city council. We will bring a five-year maintenance with this. We have 90 days of maintenance with the existing contract. That means when the contractor finishes, they'll have 90 days to maintain it. Then on top of that, we'll bring five years of continuous maintenance. And there is a theory or belief in the biology of species that in five years, when the natural species have set and they have survived, they will be able to defend themselves. With that said, we still need to have continuous maintenance. One thing that we don't consider is that the human impact on the habitat. And as I said before, we need to have, we need to help nature to combat the human impact in addition to other species that are trying to invade the area. So definitely there'll be a maintenance program with this.
And I want to be clear, you know, that the, that the Lower Arroyo is not an urban park, per se, but it's also not intended to be inaccessible to the community. We want to be there and use it as we will, as we do. A number of amenities that are consistent with open space are there. And certainly hiking and dog walking and casting, the casting pond that you mentioned are all important things. So I think the challenge is, you know, balancing those uses in a way that's respectful to the environment and to the, to the people that want to use it.
Absolutely. And we agree, it's a balancing act between something that it's not even a local park, it's a regional park that attracts attention from outside of the city of Pasadena. And we need to make sure that it's maintained in a balanced way.
There were a couple of questions about the wildlife there, in particular horned owls and golden eagles and bobcat cats. And, you know, those of us who live in the neighborhood know that all of those species of war do exist down there. So are we being sensitive to, you know, the nesting and breeding grounds of those species?
Absolutely. So one window of opportunity that we have is from now till, I would say, January, February, which is not the nesting season. The nesting season starts after that. But regardless, we will have a biologist on site. There's a wildlife biologist that's going to make sure that if there are any birds nesting on any of those trees, we will not affect them. So that's part of our contract with SOMAS, that they're providing biological and restoration ecologists to be monitoring this project. So we're very conscious of wildlife and we're going to make sure that if there are any trees with any nesting, we will not touch those or not disturb them. Even though this is not the nesting season, we will still have that to make sure that that does not occur.
Okay. Well, I want to move on, being respectful of time. There are a number of questions. We will probably send those to you, Ara, also.
Absolutely.
I haven't been able to ask and will try to respond. I certainly recognize the number of the names of folks that have asked questions. And we appreciate it. And I also want to encourage everyone to come virtually, of course, to council. We have a date, well, at least I recall it, within December, Ara, but I don't know if that's still a date that we're contemplating.
I'm sorry, I missed that. You said the date for?
A council meeting where this is coming to the council.
It's coming on the 23rd of November.
November. Okay. So that's Thanksgiving week, I think, right?
Correct. That's, in two, in two weeks, we'll be there. The reason is, we have, we have very tight deadlines. We need to have the contract executed. If we can get the contract executed in December, we can work, start work immediately in January, February, and complete work to be able to get our reimbursement from the county for Prop Day funds. So our March 21st is the deadline. We believe we can do this in two months, barring unforeseen conditions, as we have been faced with so many this year. But we are on a very tight track and we have definitely good confidence that we'll complete this project by then. So November 23rd, it will be on the council agenda for contract award.
Okay, great. And we'll keep the community well-informed about that and ask that those, those with questions or comments, please do participate. Just as a reminder to folks, we're using different rules for city council meetings these days. We're virtual and the rules state that you have to send your written comment in up to two hours before the meeting starts. Now, having said that, there have been a number of occasions where constituents in West Pasadena have sent in a comment late. And as long as Taka and I know about it, I'll make sure it's part of the record. But to be safe, if you want to, to make sure that your comment is received and made part of the record, and also you can request that the clerk read the comment into the record. That's another sort of detail that many people overlook, that unless you make that specific request, the rules don't require the comment actually read at the council. So again, we'll remind you of all of that as well. And the agendas come out on Thursdays and certainly by Friday morning, they're available on the website, the city's website. So, you know, take that time if this is an issue you're about to weigh in prior to the Monday meeting. Monday meetings are all special meetings now and they start at 2:00 PM. So it's not like the embursing meetings, which usually start at 5:30 with closed session, at 6:30 with the actual public meeting. It's an earlier start as well. So, okay. Well, thank you very much, Ara. Why don't we turn to the stream restoration project? And we'll, Brent, be leading that discussion, the wetlands, rather, the wetlands project.
Yes, I believe so. Thank you, Councilmember Madison. I'm going to share my screen and, let's see. Okay. Is everybody able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go over the Pasadena, South Pasadena Joint Lower Arroyo Wetlands Project. I'm going to start out by giving some background on how we arrived at this concept and then from there, move on to some of the information about the concept itself. So back in 2012, the MS-4 permit for the Upper LA River watershed instituted some regulations, basically placed effluent limitations on the 84 incorporated cities within the Los Angeles County. The consortiums then were created by the watershed boundaries themselves because water doesn't care so much about political boundaries. So these consortiums came together and with the idea that they would work on issues within that watershed as a group rather than every man for himself. So in the Upper LA River watershed, which the San Rafael Creek is part of, there were 19 agencies. And like I said, the goal of that consortium is to address the water issues on a regional basis. Based on monitoring over the previous 10-year period, starting in 2002, there've been over 170,000 water quality samples taken in the LA region. And from those samples, the map on the right was created. Essentially, areas were identified as very high priority, high priority or medium priority locations where projects would have kind of the most bang for their buck. That way, rather than spending money on every little problem within the watershed, we, I guess our intent was to hit kind of the worst offenders. And I wanted to point out also, the San Rafael Creek is the little yellow dot right here. And it is, it empties into the Arroyo Seco, which in turn flows into the Los Angeles River, hence the part of the Upper LA River watershed. So in that 2012 MS-4 permit, there were a bunch of pollution thresholds that were created. And here is kind of a, I know it's not the clearest, but the trash was, pollutant was supposed to be, all of our BMPs were supposed to be in place by October of 2016. So the city did install all trash racks in all city-owned catch basins citywide for those where it is technically feasible. So in other words, if there were locations, catch basins where water needed to flow through from one to another, those were skipped because if you clogged it up with trash, we would cause overflow. But we do have our screens in place in all the technically feasible city-owned catch basins citywide. The next date that we arrived at, these are all dry weather bacterium and they're for different segments of the Upper LA River. Our next date is September 2023. We have to mitigate any dry weather bacteria issues. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Following that, 2028 for metals. And then well into the future, we have toxics and wet weather bacteria. When you get down here to wet weather bacteria, you're talking, right now, the estimates county-wide are in the billions. It's just something that doesn't even seem feasible to most people at this point. But definitely something we need to be planning for as we move into the future. Here's the UR E-WIP. Folks in this area work love to use acronyms. It is like vegetable soup. UR E-WIP actually stands for Upper Los Angeles River Enhanced Watershed Management Program. That's a fancy term for more or less a recipe for achieving compliance in the watershed, watershed-wide. The E-WIP itself is, was cobbled together by all the constituents of the, of the Upper LA River watershed area and adopted in 2015 by its number of agencies. The monitoring data from the E-WIP planning process identified San Rafael Creek as a high priority location for regional water quality improvement. And that's primarily due to high levels of bacteria in the dry weather flows. Anybody familiar with the location out there knows that water flows from that outfall all year long. So we have, definitely have dry weather flows and it apparently carries high levels of, relatively high levels of bacterium. The adopted UR requires mitigation of the San Rafael flows prior to September of 2023. And if you would like to see the E-WIP document itself, I've got it located, the web address located there. Here's just some information about where the San Rafael Creek is located. The Arroyo is the blue line that runs pretty well north and south. And then San Rafael Creek, which probably many don't even realize is a creek, at least in this part. And then when you get to Johnston Lake, Johnston Lake outfalls into what I would call San Rafael Creek proper. It's kind of an open soil, also a large county storm drain empties into the creek right about here. So what are our mitigation options for the bacteria? Probably the easiest approach, but maybe the most expensive approach is to pump the dry weather flows to the sanitary sewer. In terms of, you know, just aesthetics, habitat improvements, things like that, this isn't something we thought the residents and stakeholders, whatnot, users of the Arroyo would find to be very attractive. Plus their high annual cost for treatment of the effluent. Essentially, we'd be paying the sewer treatment facilities annually. I think it was about a million dollars a year in that ballpark for treatment of the water flows. Just a huge cost and that's something that was very palatable. The other options are some sort of infiltration- options are some sort of infiltration basin or constructed wetland. Constructed wetland is kind of a hybrid. Not only does it, it provides some infiltration, but also through other things like just the settling time, particle bound pollutants are removed from the water. Also, the plants help to filter the water. So in the grand scheme of things, our goal with the project, or at least the goal of the concepts we had in mind, were to meet our water quality mandates, but also enhance the, the lower Arroyo in a natural way or as natural as possible. We did something similar to this in the Berkshire Creek Habitat Restoration Project that was completed in March of this year. We ended up making it look very natural. We didn't have as much water quality objective at that location, but still it was, I think it was a great success. Kind of building on that, we were looking at, at, I guess, the concept for this location is a constructed wetland. By doing so, we would add to the habitat and by biodiversity of the lower Arroyo, enhance groundwater recharge and provide some educational opportunities for children and schoolkids in the area. I think with some nice signage, we could describe some of the things, elements that are going on in the project. Obviously, that all needs to be planned out yet, but we, we think that there's some very nice ways to, to do that. Just to give you an idea of the location, excuse me, this is kind of the start of the channelized portion of San Rafael Creek. Here, where my cursor arrow is, is kind of the natural creek. And then just to the right, I think it's just out of the picture right here, there's a large, I think, 72-inch storm drain that, that empties into that. So there are large flows that come down the channel. For that reason, getting rid of the channel completely, which is owned by the LA County Storm, let's see, anyway, it's owned by LA County. I don't know that we could get rid of the channel completely, but I do believe there's ways that we can work with what's there to naturalize it in appearance. And there's, again, this is very early on in the project, we're at concept design, but I, you know, we will be bringing this to the public. Here's another picture, midpoint of the channelized portion. And then this is the outfall itself. I guess the concept we have in mind is we would be using area either over here or over here. The right side over here seems like a better location because it's more accessible by the public. But again, this will be, will be coming to the public with outreach in the future and those are decisions to yet be made. So how are we going to pay for this? Anthony Portantino, Senator Portantino, was a principal co-author of SB5, which paved the way for the 2019 voter approval Prop 68. With regards to his work on the measure, he stated below, it was a pleasure working with educators and city leaders. Essentially, he wants the project that he had set aside for us. He intended for us to work with the city of South Pasadena on a project that we could mutually get behind. So the Prop 68 grant funding itself provided three and a half million dollars. The likely construction cost will be, we think will be more than that. The county currently has Measure W. They are, they have competitive dollars available. So we'd certainly be looking for other avenues of funding so we don't have to use city funds. But Portantino helped us in a great way, at least get the project started. And to give you an idea of what we plan on doing, there is, this is just a concept drawing. Looking at a wetland type project right here, there would be a diversion from the channel, maybe some kind of covering put on the channel that would be similar to the Berkshire Creek project. Another alternative would be this side, there's more room available, but the south side, or I guess that would be the west side of the channel, just isn't as accessible for, for park users. And again, we worked with the city of South Pasadena for several months last year to come up with a concept that we could both get behind. Just 1,500 feet or so south of this locate, the Pasadena location is the South Pass location, which is an existing wetland or was, I believe was built in the 50s. It's all overgrown. So the idea there would be to remove some of the non-natives and really clean that area up and create a wetland type project there too. And I, so what are the next steps? We, even though the grant money has been set aside for us by the state legislature, we are still required to submit an official application for the funds. So council, our council just approved the resolution and MOU for the project. We're putting the finishing touches on the application. We'll be submitting that. Once we get the approval from the state, we can select a consultant to start design, well, a consultant to start the public outreach, finalize the project concept, do environmental studies, which on a project like this are a pretty big part of the design in, in all. Do some of the design jurisdictional permitting. My experience in the Berkshire Creek project, this could be another, another, not a hurdle exactly, but we just know it's something that's going to take some time to get through permitting. And then finally, construction. For the Prop 68 money, at least, the grant requires the completion by March 31st, 2024, which works pretty nicely with the, the requirements here for the pollutants of our September 2023 deadline for bacteria TMDL. And I think that is all I have for the, as far as slides. Again, we will want the public to be a big part of this. We want to make it something everyone in Pasadena can be proud of and get behind. And I will mail over for questions.
So thank you very much. This is an interesting initiative and I've got a number of great questions. One that I just love is, is there an opportunity to create an educational experience as this evolves? And certainly for climate change and environmentalism and all of those things, this would be a great lesson. But I also don't want to have, you know, parking lots and restrooms and things down there around the classroom, but.
You're right. It will be a balance. I don't think we, you know, we want like a Disneyland by any stretch of the imagination, but to put some nice educational signage or have, you know, we will have public outreach meetings. Off the top of my head, I can't think of any, you know, really great ways to get children or kids involved, but, but I'm sure there are those opportunities out there. And I think this would be a great project for that.
It might just be short sight visits, you know. And again, I recognize there may be some logistic issues there, challenges in terms of managing that. But, and another question is, how are the two cities managing the project? Is it just joint venture or what?
So we, in the, the MOU between the two cities defines that relationship. And the city of Pasadena is the, the manager of the, of the project. I guess the lead agency, you would say. So we will manage, be the one that actually manages the consultant, the overall design. But of course, we will include South Pass and their input in everything. But ultimately, we are the ones, we are the, the group organization that will be managing the grant. Essentially, we'll receive the money from the state and make all the payments to the contractor, do the bidding, that sort of thing. So we will be the lead agency.
And I would certainly love to get a copy of your PowerPoint, Brett, as well as ours PowerPoint from the earlier project. You know, we're being asked if we can post a link to where we can find the project plan. And you may already have one on the Public Works Department section of the city website, but we should coordinate with you and that way on the District 6 website as part of the city. We can also direct people there.
Sure. I don't know that we have a drawing up yet, but I can definitely send you the PowerPoint. I've tried to be very careful to call this a concept because it, because it is super early and things can change drastically. Once we get into the public outreach phase, even the permitting phase could, could really, you know, even if we want to do Project A, once we start dealing with the permitting agencies like CDFW or the Army Corps of Engineer, they may not necessarily agree with what we want to do and have to make, we have to make some changes to make it in line with what their wishes are. So I don't have a problem sending or putting something up. I just want to be careful to not alarm anybody that we've got, you know, some project already all designed and we're just going to move forward with it.
And then another question is about sort of what we would call vector control in Pasadena, city and municipal affairs, but will there be a mosquito issue as a result of this work?
That will certainly be taken into account during the environmental phase. I think there is this whole section of CECL that, that looks into vector control and definitely something we will have to be aware of. We don't want to create a problem. We're trying to solve one. I know there will be some filters in place at the initial diversion. I guess that's one thing I failed to say throughout the, the project, but that we do have this metal, sorry if I'm making people dizzy. The 2028, we have a metals compliance date and a project, at least from the concept that we're thinking of now, we would be meeting, at least with this project, we would be meeting the metals mandate as well. So there'll be some filtering in place before the water, whatever you can get into the, the wetlands. That would take out a lot of the, it would fix a lot of the issues right off the bat. But yeah, that's a great question. It's definitely something we will be aware of as we move through the design process.
Okay. One of our observers asks if there will be private donations toward the project. We may hear about that when Doug Granweeckel speaks in a bit, but this is actually very touching. The, the comment says, I have a five-year-old who would like to donate to support the creation of wetlands and better bird habitats in Pasadena. So that's quite a precocious five-year-old. I guess a need or an avenue for private donations?
I would have to investigate that. I don't know that I've ever received that question. I'm, I'm sure we could determine a way to make that a possibility. And we are definitely looking for money, as I mentioned, with Measure W, we've got an application into supplement the Prop 68 dollars that we have already been, well, I guess not already, it's been set aside and you still have to apply. But we will be looking to supplement that with Measure W and definitely wouldn't turn away a five-year-old.
Well, and maybe we can combine a couple of those concepts of, you know, the whole class of five-year-olds coming to visit and maybe the donation could go for snacks, but there'd be an educational experience there.
Sure.
Because certainly there's nothing more important for that generation than all of us on this planet and the way that we're treating and relating to it. So.
Councilmember Madison, maybe there'll be opportunities for volunteers to assist with the maintenance in the future as part of education. There could be a maintenance project that they can assist with. And I know that Arroyo Seco Foundation does that a lot. They have volunteers that they come and weed invasive species or they help with maintenance. So I'm sure that'll be a great opportunity for any, anybody to help with the maintenance of that project in the future because that will remain for a long, long time.
Certainly. I'd be derelict if I didn't mention a couple of comments that may not be directly on point with any particular mind base, but maybe all of our topics tonight. And that is the wildfire risk in the Arroyo. And that's something that keeps your council member up at night worrying about, especially with the proliferation of homeless people that cook or may want to warm themselves if the weather gets cooler with fire. I wonder if any of you could comment on that, recognizing this primarily the fire department. But, you know, with regard to these projects, are we being mindful of the constant risk of fire?
Councilmember, again, I'm going to beat a dead horse, but the native species that have been here for thousands of years, if we utilize those species, their fire resistance or they will sustain fires. So it's, it's the other species like eucalyptus, which is very flammable. So that's why we're very concerned about, when we call them non-natives. The natives have adopted to this area and they can survive. But as far as maintaining from fire perspective, Fire Department is very active in that region and they do regular visits. And we've had several meetings with them when Parks was within Public Works, we used to collaborate with them. Now it's Parks and Recreation Department that does that. But we did, we did have collaboration with the Fire Department and Fire Management. So it is a huge concern for all of us. Absolutely.
Definitely. Okay. Well, thank you, Brett. Why don't we turn to Doug Granweeckel and Rick Gould and the One Arroyo Foundation, also another exciting aspect and kind of, I think it fits perfectly with these other projects and the sense of the importance of the Arroyo and trying to form public-private partnerships. That's really what One Arroyo has done, in my view. And there's some exciting projects that we've already given the initial green light to that perhaps we can talk about. But Doug, I'll get into it over here.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. And hey, thank you for all you do for your District 6 constituency and talking. You're fabulous. And we appreciate that. And we appreciate the chance to talk tonight about our project, One Arroyo Foundation. I had lunch today with Bill Bogart, who was very instrumental in this effort. And Bill just wanted me to pass along his regrets that he could not be with us tonight. He wanted to be, but he had a longstanding commitment to the board. He had to attend. And Dan Rothenberg, I don't see his name up here yet. Dan had a telephonic meeting. He was going to be on at the start of this meeting, but hoped he would finish in time to join. Dan was also a District 6 resident, lives over in Bellefontaine. He's a president of One Arroyo Foundation. With me, however, you all know Bill, of course. Some of you know me. Many of you probably know Dan, but you probably don't know Rick Gould, whose face is up there on the screen. Rick is also a resident District 6 and lives near me in Linda, in the Linda Vista area. And we have been very fortunate to have him join us as our executive director. Rick has over 40 years' experience working in the area of Parks and Recreation in Northern and Southern California. The last 17 years before he retired, he was the Director of Parks Recreation, I think Community is the other name of that, Rick, that he was involved in Santa Clarita. Big job. And during that time, he helped develop over 80 miles of trail. So he brings enormous experience to us. He's also quite involved with the San Monica Mountains Conservancy, both when he was in Santa Clarita and now even past that, with his retirement time there. Anyhow, this is really kind of a District 6 project there. Eight members of our board, Steve, are also residents of your district, including Phil, Dan, myself, and then others. And Rick, who is the director. I would plan tonight to start with a brief history of our project. And then Rick is going to pick up as to where we currently are and what we're looking to do in the short term, if you will. And hopefully Dan will be able to join us along the way and add some wisdom as well. You can find a lot of what we're going to be talking about at our website, which is onearroyo.org. And we have now a pretty interesting newsletter, at least I find it interesting, that I hope you'll be look for and read. I suspect there are a number of our other board members on this call tonight. I see you've got good attendance, Steve. We have many residents in your district. Just by way of history, you may remember that the Arroyo Advisory Group, a no longer existing entity, was formed in 2017, early 2017, to take a look at the Arroyo as a whole, a unified thing, to attempt to bring some vision to what the Arroyo Seco could and should be. We were encouraged to look for a public-private funding partnership early on by Steve and various other members of the city. And that's kind of where we focused our attention. Trying to invent a new paradigm so that the Arroyo Seco, which is 100% owned by the city of Pasadena, but is used really as a regional park, as I think, or someone else. Number of the people that use the loop and other aspects that are not Pasadena, but to date, the city of Pasadena, it's going to be funded really well. So we're looking to broaden the funding through the private areas and to California and the county as well. The Arroyo Advisory Group met regularly as a group in committees. We had 15 meetings around the city, including two in District 6. I think our first meeting was at Mayfield, a big meeting early on at Mayfield. We did a survey, which we had 2,600 and something respondents, Rick will know the number better than I, something like that, and gave us their views on what we should incorporate in our project. And we tried to follow through with that. We issued a report in August of 2018, which included a vision statement for the Arroyo Seco, guiding principles for the Arroyo Seco, which emphasized the naturalness and using natural materials and doing whatever we do. And it recommended a unifying feature of the Arroyo Seco is the trail that runs throughout. There's a lot of trails in the Arroyo, many even under-maintained, need to be fixed and can be fixed. And the signage is for the other constructs, which they could use to permit. So we used the trail as a unifier for the One Arroyo project. And we proposed two demonstration projects along the trail, which would show the possibilities that things we could accomplish. We also proposed a formal foundation to explore the new funding paradigm. That report was unanimously approved by the members of the Arroyo Advisory Group and then by the city council. And our foundation was formed shortly after that as a nonprofit. And as I indicated, a lot of District 6 members and residents are directors of the foundation. We proceeded successfully to raise money to prove that we could put this new paradigm together. We raised significant funds. We raised enough to cover the design phase. I think the environmental phase as well, and some money for the construction phase at this point. You asked earlier, Steve, I think you raised a question about endowment, the ability to maintain whatever it is that is done. And our project proposes $5 million for construction, if you will, and $2 million for endowment to make sure that we can maintain whatever it is that we do at the end of the day. And we're well along the way to meeting our goals. I know there's some probably on this call who would prefer that we pivot and go in a different direction, even if we wanted to, which I say we do. That's not a very easy thing to accomplish because we have an obligation to those who've given money based on the advisory report that is approved, approved by the council. And we have an obligation to the council to follow through with what we said we would do. So at this point, I'm going to ask Rick to pick up and talk about where we are and where we're headed in short term.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you, Councilmember Madison. I appreciate the time. I'd like to start by saying, in order to do any kind of project on public land, you need to have the consent of the property owner, which is the city of Pasadena. So what we did initially was, can you hear me? My screen is showing me.
Yes.
Okay. We needed the consent of the city of Pasadena. So we worked with the city of Pasadena staff to develop a memorandum of understanding that governed our relationship between the city. that governed our relationship between the city and the One Arroyo Foundation and our goals. And the City Council was guided us in that memorandum of understanding. It was adopted in the summer of twenty nineteen, and it allowed us to proceed forward with the One Arroyo Trail project. We were then in organizational phase, forming our board. But by early twenty twenty, we were ready to issue a request for proposal looking for a firm to represent us in the design of the One Arroyo Trail, and specifically the demonstration projects. Unfortunately, something happened worldwide called COVID. It slowed us down a little bit, but we were finally able to issue that request for proposals in late April of twenty twenty. And over about a two-month period, May and June of twenty twenty, we met continuously with design firms. We took them on tours of the Arroyo and specific project sites. And ultimately, they submitted to, they submitted proposals to us in early July of twenty twenty. We went through a selection process in August and early September of twenty twenty, and ultimately recommended to our board that we hire a design firm to represent One Arroyo and ultimately the City of Pasadena in designing the One Arroyo demonstration project. The name of that firm is the RGM Design Group, they're out of San Juan Capistrano, California. And we are looking forward to them. I would say the design firm, why we were drawn to them, really is probably twofold. One, they have a very robust public input process that is not only could be in person, it's also very, very well-developed virtually, so it can be done online, regardless of whether we have COVID or not. And married with public input directly face-to-face and online, we believe we will get a good feel for what the project could look like once we're done. Secondly, they have tremendous trail experience. And the resume that they have extends all over Southern California, all the way into Yosemite National Park in the middle of Central California. That resume, by the way, is available online if anybody wants to take a look at it, and I'll mention it in just a second. We think, based on the information that we have, that we will enter it, formally enter into the contract with RJM within the next week, probably ten days, and they will begin, they have already really done it. They will begin background work on the One Arroyo Trail demonstration projects and be prepared to go out to the public seeking input in, after the first of the year, in early twenty twenty-one. Background information on this project, One Arroyo, and the RJM Design Group firm is all available on our website, which is onearroyo.org. In addition, there is a signup form available on that website, so you can sign up with your email, and we will email you regular updates when and if there are developments as far as the One Arroyo Trail project as it progresses. Significantly, RJM will also develop a website for the project, which will be real-time. They will update the project website as, as it progresses, you will be able to see what is going on. And our intent is to make this as visible to the public and seek as much input as we can throughout the entire project. If you're interested in what the project was originally envisioned to be, that's also on the website. It's contained in something called the Trail Report that was presented to the City Council in August of twenty eighteen. Doug, I think that's about it, and I also noticed that our President Dan Rothenberg has joined us, and I'm not sure if Dan wants to add anything, or if he's interested in engaging in questions.
As I had to arrive late, I will spare everybody at me just rambling on on things you've already covered, but I'm happy to be here and happy to take any questions from anybody.
Well, thank you, all three of you, Doug and Rick and Dan, for all you're doing. And I would say there is a lot of interest in this, and so I appreciate the website. And we should point out that as the foundation is named One Arroyo, the website is also onearroyo.org, and the one is spelled out, so it's not the numeral, it's O-N-E, arroyo.org. And everyone should certainly consult that. We've got a couple of questions here from folks. You know, an obvious one is, well, is this going to just attract more users and create all of the sort of unintended consequences of trash and noise and all of that? And I kind of addressed that a little bit earlier myself, that this is not a piece of porcelain, we need to respect it and maintain it, but it also, it's intended to be used, right? I mean, wasn't it Teddy Roosevelt who commented on Arroyo and, you know, others? But please, you're the experts on this, what, what's your response to that?
Well, maybe I'll start and say, if I, if I can start, and then I'll let Dan follow up. But one of the two, one of the reasons that two locations for the demonstration projects was chosen is they're critical linkages between Ahahanga, the central Arroyo, and the lower Arroyo. Those are two sections of the trail that need the most attention, and they have some of the most obstacles. And I'm, I may not be as spry as I used to be, but I find places along that trail that I have difficulty navigating. And those critical linkages need to be restored, they need to be enhanced. And could more people use them? Yes. But all I think we have to do is look around us today, and look what COVID has done for us. It has brought more people to the outdoors, and the Arroyo is a treasure, it's a national treasure. And having safe, restored trails available to us to use is important for our community.
Thanks, Rick, and you covered most of what I would have said. The only thing I would add is our focus has been on getting it to a place where we're comfortable using it. As Rick said, there are certain segments that are difficult to pass and difficult to utilize, and our goal is simply to bring those up to some level that we think would be usable and decent for the current community and users to enjoy. The goal was not to broadcast this widely and try to attract new users, but as Rick said, COVID has done a little bit of that for us already. I still think there's plenty of room down there for all of us to utilize it and, and hopefully be happy with, with how it is.
Yeah, I think one could argue that it, you know, what's the old, actually, good senses make good neighbors, you know, good trails make for a healthier Arroyo, because then people know where they are, it's safer, healthier. And certainly, we don't want the eighty miles of trails that Rick has developed in his whole career of being a lower Arroyo, but I'm not seeing that happening anytime soon either. I'm sure there'll be debate about which project and where, and where to start, and so forth and so on. But, you know, it is really an amazing place, the, the entire Arroyo, you know, with Ahahanga, with the central Arroyo, which really is family recreation. If you look at the amenities that we have there in the central Arroyo, starting with the Rose Bowl, of course, but the golf, the Aquatic Center, the tennis courts, the baseball diamond, the Rosemont Pavilion, just on and on. And then the lower Arroyo being passive open space, but certainly passive open space to be enjoyed and, and used by the community, so. Well, I don't think we have any more questions. So let me wrap up and maybe give folks a few extra minutes here. It's always, for me, a little bit of a depressing time of year, right? You get dark so early and stays dark so late, you know, and you feel like almost all you do is, is wake up in the dark, work, and then go to sleep or finish working in the dark. But I'm really grateful to all of you today for being part of our, our town hall, our Chris, Brent, and their staff, and Doug and Dan and Rick, for all the work that you're doing. Give our best to Bill Bogard. You know, I always say, if you want to get something done, ask a busy person. And that certainly applies to everyone involved here on the screen that I'm looking at. And I also want to thank K-Pass, although we did ultimately have a conflict with Municipal Services Committee, but Gary DeVore and Jay Chang, and obviously George Florida over at K-Pass have been great to us, and we're grateful. So we will try to respond to all the questions that we didn't answer by email. And we'll push out some of these websites and the like, links on our District Six website. And most of all, everyone be really safe and well, and wear a mask, as the President-elect said, it's important and great advice. And if I don't speak with any of you, have a really happy Thanksgiving, even today, with all this going on, we all have a lot to be thankful for. So thank you, have a great night, and I hope to talk to each of you soon.
Thank you. Good night.